All right, we signed up for your good.
I'm done.
Well, I need to record it.
Well, I need to do my best.
I'm done with the first one.
Okay, did you have three so far?
I just finished the third one.
I mean, you don't have to do all of that.
She sent me a link out to the third one. And I said that I didn't register, but I can remember what I said. So you sent me the recording, and I think she sent me the recording.
It was louder.
I want to call more people.
Sir?
Oh, I've got all those chairs.
I'm sorry.
I'll follow along.
I'll say I can sit in there.
Can you just sit right here? Do that, please.
Debbie, don't be silent.
Oh, yeah. You know what? Sure.
Water. That's a lot of screen.
I wish they were just like a digital conference chat.
And this is stable. Or maybe it's not stable. We have to call our program. She has a script. (coughing)
All right, at six thirty, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the opening session invocation by Rick Dodson and the pledge allegiance by my case.
That was great. All thanks to heaven, mother, we thank you as great day. Just say, Father, we thank you, Father, bless us with life, Father. We say everything we do tonight, for first and foremost, we please you first and foremost, Father, and be it for the betterment of the children and the people of Overton County, Father, and all our staff, Father. I just ask that you lead God and drinks as every citizen makes tonight, Father. And we ask you to forgive us from our guilty, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to number four, approval of the minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ben Daner, seconded by Rick Dodson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five, additions or deletions to the proposed meeting agenda. And I'll take a motion to, for approval of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five meeting agenda. Motion by James Klaus, seconded by Ben Daner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the first item we have is Mr. Michael Baldwin. This is, oh, Mr. Michael Baldwin has wanted to come to address the school board. Mr. Baldwin, we'll give you five minutes to address the school board. And you, if you want to be up there. You can come up here and stand so everybody can see us. Whenever you're ready, I'll start that five-minute timer.
Thank you. You won't take long. About two months ago, there was an incident concerning my daughter about bullying with Dr. Holman, and I thought that meeting went real well, to be honest. I know he tried to work on some things. He called, contacted me, and I couldn't get away from work. And to be honest, I don't want to deal with Mr. Smith because he is lying to his students. So I had no confidence in this ability to do his job. Bullying is a very serious thing. And the same group that is bullying, or had bullying and still bullying my daughter, also is bullying another girl who's in an institution right now from this area. So I thought y'all needed to know that. And they contacted me. I didn't contact them. They contacted me. So it's a serious problem. And after it backed off, as I assume, there was some things done, it spread to my grandson, where they started picking on him. And I've been inside this situation, inside this institution, and I worked for Dr. Holman for about almost two and a half years. And I know he released me, said there was no, he didn't need my services any longer. And Dr. Holman, that was a blessing. I appreciate it. Okay? So there's no hard feelings whatsoever of that one. It was a blessing for me. But this is a serious thing, and it still hasn't been corrected yet, in my opinion. And since it's not being corrected, I have to go higher coming here today. And I'm also going to seek some assistance from the state since Mr. Smith can't seem to handle his students. And he's used several things, like I can't know everything. I can tell you, I've been over a facility that I had twenty-five hundred people going up that worked for me. You know what? I knew everything that was going on. If I didn't, couldn't rely on my support, my supervisors and managers, then they weren't doing their job because I should know everything that's going on. Bullying is serious. It's reached even to the Supreme Court. Cyberbullying and bullying in general, and it threatens my daughter's life. So I take this very seriously, ladies and gentlemen. And I will do whatever I have to do to protect her and other students because I don't want to see it happen to them. It's not right. And something needs to be done inside the institution of Overton County because I've been to every school except the two schools. And I've seen it in every school I was in. So I'm speaking to you as a concerned parent, concerned grandfather, and a concerned Overton County person. And that's what I'm looking for, is I want it to stop. And it can't be a hundred percent, but it spread and it affected my grandson. And that's unacceptable in my book. And if I was grading you all, grading the system, I'm done. You all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it with my talking pipe. Because I'll turn it back to you.
Mr. Brown, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We have had bullying very serious also. And now that you brought it to our attention, we'll direct Dr. Holman here to continue working with you and work in any way that we can get this problem solved and get an outcome that will be acceptable for you and the school district.
Okay? Because she goes on to the high school next year, and that's now in Mr. Melton's lap. Same people are going, same people are going to do the same thing because they don't think that they all have anything pretty tense though. And I'm holding you all accountable. And I asked for everything in writing that was done, and I never got any right. And I'm learning that from you. Unless anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
And as I said, well, Dr. Holman will be in continued contact with you, and we will continue to address this to get a satisfactory answer for you and for the school system also, and what's going on.
Okay? I also wanted you to grade, okay?
Okay.
That's, I am within my legal bounds to require that. I have a recheck. Now, this is twice, I haven't got something, right? Every time the baseball team start again.
So we'll have Dr. Holman work with you to continue doing, to continue pursuing this, and he will get everything that you requested, and we'll go from there.
All right. Thanks very much, and you all have a very beautiful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move to consider approval of the contract of employment between Dr. Holman and Overton County Board of Education. Do you have a motion for that? Motion by Shirley Myers, seconded by James Klaus.
William Abson?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
No.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Daner?
No.
Ricky Dodson?
No, and I want to explain, I, the fudge is kind of a whack, and, and we've had a, we've had a terrible year with the budget. And we've had a lot of cuts, and it's affected a lot of people. And I just, I just don't think we have to give Dr. Holman thirteen thousand dollar raise at this time, so I vote no.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
No.
Mitch Dunzucker?
No.
Five, four, and five votes.
Getting some motion files on renewing the contract with Dr. Holman. So we'll get it with our attorney and see how we need to proceed about getting everything taken care of from there. The next thing we'll move into is the personal appeal regarding Ms. Julie Miller. I'll play a link through here. For the matter concerning the recent decision issued by the hearing officer Dale Condor sustaining a suspension of ten-year teacher Julie Miller, the chair recognizes Dr. Donnie Holman, Director of Schools.
To the place of the board on November the sixth, twenty twenty four, I formally recommend that Julie Miller for a four-day suspension for unprofessional conduct pursuant to after Ms. Miller appealed the decision to an independent hearing officer. After choosing Mr. Condor as the hearing officer, the parties and their counsel participated in a hearing on January twenty seventh and twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. On March fourteenth, Mr. Condor entered a written decision sustaining Ms. Miller's suspension. On March eighteenth, I received a letter from Ms. Miller's attorney appealing Mr. Condor's decision, the board. On May the second, I sent each member of the board a copy of Ms. Miller's appeal letter, a copy of Mr. Condor's written decision, and a copy of the January twenty seventh and twenty eighth hearing transcript with the decisions.
Members of the board, Ms. Miller has asked that we consider modifying or reversing Mr. Condor's decision sustaining the suspension. In consideration of Ms. Miller's appeal, the board is governed by Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine dash five dash five twelve. As Dr. Holman noted, the board has already been provided with copies of the documents related to this matter. We can only consider the information before us. No new evidence shall be introduced. Before discussing or deliberating about the information, we first shall hear from Ms. Miller and then from Catherine Kimmel, Counsel for the Board. The chair now recognizes Ms. Miller or her attorney for ten minutes to argue why Ms. Condor's decision should be modified or reversed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Chair, Mr. Director. I'm Virginia McCoy. I am attorney with the Tennessee Education Association, and I represented Ms. Miller at the hearing below. So I am presenting her appeal to the board with say. I'm going to jump right into the arguments that I want the board to consider. I do hope you did have a chance to review the transcript. I think you would have found it a very interesting hearing if you, if you looked at the testimony that was given, the things that were said, the exhibits that were submitted as part of that. Based on the communications from Dr. Holman, I identified two causes out of the five causes for which a teacher can be disciplined in the state of Tennessee. Unprofessional conduct, which is also called conduct unbecoming or improper teaching profession, and inefficiency. I'm going to address each of those and why I believe that the school administration did not meet its burden of proving either of those two clauses to support the four-day suspension. So, unprofessional conduct has multiple definitions in the Tennessee Code. But the one that seemed most germane in this proceeding was disregard of the teacher code of ethics in part ten of this chapter in such a manner as to make one obnoxious as a member of the profession. And the reason that I focused in on that in my argument was because one of those ethical provisions was actually cited in a letter from Dr. Holman. So there was an October second, two thousand twenty four notice of suspension. It's exhibit four in the record. It specifically cited to a provision in the teacher code of ethics, forty-nine five, one thousand three, B fifteen. And I'm going to read that to you a little long, but bear with me. In fulfillment of this obligation to the student and educator, shall not engage in any sexually related behavior with the student, whether verbal, written, physical, or electronic, with or without the student's consent. Sexually related behavior includes, but is not limited to, behaviors such as making sexual jokes or sexual remarks, engaging in sexual kidding, sexual teasing, or sexual innuendo, pressuring the student for dates or sexual favors, engaging in inappropriate physical touching, groping, or grabbing, kissing, rape, threatening physical harm, and committing sexual assault. It's a pretty serious ethical provision. This ethical provision is broad. It covers a lot of conduct. But it's instructive to look at what is specifically prohibited in that ethical expectation and how it applies to the evidence in Ms. Miller's case. Ms. Miller is, by the testimony of her colleague, Ms. Jolly, her principal, Mr. Melton, and a student who came to testify on her behalf, who was only identified by the initial N.D. As a very good teacher, in fact, possibly one of the best teachers on the staff at Livingston Academy. She is also a teacher who takes a great deal of her responsibilities seriously in serving those students. Now, Ms. Miller testified in the hearing that she was responding to a student inquiry on the date of the incident in question. She had just taught a lesson about propaganda in the context of the eighteenth century and the Revolutionary War, focusing particularly on Paul Revere, who apparently was quite a little propagandist himself. At the end of the lesson, she set aside five minutes to give the students to bring up a topic that they wanted to discuss as it related to the topic of propaganda. Now, in the course of that lesson, Ms. Miller had led the students to ask two questions. Looking at propaganda, evaluating propaganda. How do you know what you know? And how do you know who you trust? She invented that lesson, offered the students a chance to suggest a topic, and one of the students suggested the PD scan. And so, now that's a scandal that involves sexual behavior. It is a scandal that involves non-consensual and illegal sexual behavior. But it is a scandal that has been all over the news, has been all over social media. It was a story to which the students had already been exposed and knew quite a bit about the allegations. In fact, there was a student who brought up an allegation about a ketamine-laced lube that wasn't completely new to Ms. Miller. She did never heard about before. But the students were engaged, they were talking about it. They were offering their own accounts of what they understood the allegations were. They were going back and forth with her. Now, if you listen to the recording that a student LT did during this particular lesson and, and the last five minutes, although you don't get the complete five minutes, the much shorter tape. It's very hard to hear the students' questions, but it is obvious that there is interaction between Ms. Miller and the students in the classroom. So she was using this as a teachable moment, a way to make propaganda in the eighteenth century relevant to twenty-first century students. So she was not making sexual jokes here. She was not engaging in sexual kidding, sexual teasing, sexual innuendo, inappropriate touching, groping, grabbing, kissing, rape, threatening physical harm, or committing sexual assault, or any of the things that are listed in that ethical provision. That ethical provision is getting at inappropriate sexual behavior by a teacher towards students. This was an attempt to teach. This was an attempt to meet the students where they were and to make a contemporary issue relevant to a lesson about the eighteenth century. It was very successful. In fact, several students, including the student who made the recording, stayed after school just so they could talk to her some more about the lesson and tell her what an interesting lesson, what a great lesson it had been. Now, my contention on Ms. Miller's behalf is that the school administration did not prove that she was guilty of violating that, violating that ethical expectation. They may have had some concerns about the topic, and she understood that. And that's why she said in her meeting with Dr. Holman that she regretted that it happened and that it would not happen again. But it was an opportunity she saw to be able to engage with students where they were. She was being a good teacher in that situation. She was being a teacher responsive to the interest of her students. It just happened to be that they were very interested in a fairly salacious new school. Now, the other cause for which she was charged is inefficiency. And inefficiency means several different things. It means being below the standards of efficiency represented by others employed for the same work. It also includes having evaluation results more than one that shows that one is below expectation or significantly below expectations under the evaluation guidelines. That means you get a one or a two on your level of effectiveness. There is absolutely no allegation in this suspension that Ms. Miller is guilty of that definition of inefficiency. She is, in fact, an excellent teacher, and her most recent observation of practice prior to the hearing showed that she was performing at the highest levels of expectation for a classroom teacher. The only part of the statutory definition that might be an issue here is the allegation that she was performing below the standards of efficiency maintained by others currently employed by the board for similar work. However, Ms. Miller has an excellent reputation as an educator. We heard from Ms. Jolly, her colleagues, and Principal Melton, her supervisor, that she has a stellar reputation as a teacher at Livingston Academy. Is considered one of the best teachers on the faculty. She is head of her department. She has a long history of caring for her students as she works without additional compensation to make sure that the seniors get to go to Disney World every year for their senior trip. The school administration offered no evidence to show that Ms. Miller was performing below the standards of efficiency maintained by others currently employed by Overton County schools. In fact, according to Ms. Jolly, who came and testified, there was considerable sentiment at the school that the case had been mishandled by the school administration, especially considering Ms. Miller's excellent reputation and her complete lack of discipline over thirty-three years of service as a teacher. As Ms. Miller suggested in her meeting with Dr. Holman and Principal Melton, and as Ms. Jolly opined in her testimony, the matter could have been handled simply with a written reprimand, rather than taking four days of pay from a thirty-three-year veteran teacher with an exemplary record. Because she had already expressed her remorse that this had happened and her commitment not to have it happen again. I contend that the school administration has not proven the charge of inefficiency against Ms. Miller, and we are here today to ask the board to rescind the four-day suspension and to reimburse Ms. Miller for the four days of pay that she lost as a sanction. Thank you so much for that.
The board now recognizes Ms. Kimmel for ten minutes to argue why Mr. Condor's decision should be sustained or upheld.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Catherine Kimmel. I have represented the school district at the hearing below. And I'm here tonight to represent the district in Ms. Miller's appeal, to present the district's case. If you don't mind, I'm going to start my stopwatch. I have a terrible sense of time. So this case, in my opinion, begins and ends with the recording taken in Ms. Miller's classroom on January thirtieth, twenty twenty four. On the recording, which I will play for you, you'll hear Ms. Miller discuss in explicit detail the sex trafficking allegations against the music mogul Sean Diddy Holmes. And as, after your review of the record, you'll know Ms. Miller does not dispute. This is her voice on the recording. She made these statements. What you hear on the recording is not disputed at all. The same day that the recording was made, Assistant Director Kim Dillon received a complaint from a parent about the inappropriate conversation that Ms. Miller had with students in her classroom. The parents sent the recording that you will hear to Ms. Dillon, who immediately forwarded it to Dr. Holman. Dr. Holman shared it with Mr. Melton, Principal Adams in Academy. And both, both administrators were immediately alarmed by the contents of the recording, and they scheduled a meeting with Ms. Miller for the following morning at eight a.m. And now, with that background, I'd like to play the recording because it is the sole basis for Ms. Miller's suspension.
If you think that Diddy is the top of the dynasty, he's not, okay? The people that are going down with Diddy are Usher. Talking about J Lo, you're talking about Beyonce, Beyoncé, J.J., Sean Lennon, Chris Diddy, all those people are going down because they're Diddy parties. All of those people are going down because these Diddy parties, that's not just baby oil, by the way, that's what they brought out. You're talking about, yeah, it was, it was, it was oil-wise living product, but yeah. What he did. Do you not fully understand what he did? He took these people back and... Okay, do you want to go back to the Diddy party and be forced to have anal sex with these people? And then video it? Can you imagine? He can't do that. They take you out of work. That's what this is serious. They take you back, they videotape you, and they spend their separate days. Why do you think Justin Bieber is so dangerous right now? He's dating a lot. Well, you know, wait, wait, the guy too, I saw a test movie of a girl. She was 13, I think, and they were, she was like a party favorer. That's what they call these kids. And you're talking about kids that are, I mean, no, they use these kids, these babies for this thing. You have no idea how bad this is about to break. And you know who else I think I love even more? If you don't have a mama on one of those stages. I believe that he was at those Diddy parties. You're gonna have, you're gonna have, you're not, you're gonna have politicians across the board that isn't, that isn't red versus blue. You've got terrible politicians across the board doing this stuff. And this is what they do. They take you in, they bring you in to these parties, and these are Diddy parties, but they have those parties, lots of Diddy parties all over the place. They say, okay, you're gonna have sex with this, you know, nine-year-old boy. Or, and, or, you do this, or we're gonna, he can have seven mansions and we'll support you. Which one do you want? Well, first you want the mansion, but you gotta do this. And if you don't do that, when you do that, they videotape you. You don't know that videotapes that are about to come out on this document ready for what they're doing. All you have to do is look up, all you have to do is look up. It's all out there. The child trafficking, the child trafficking, the justice people are doing is horrible. And it's been going on for years. And so, it bothers me when you guys are laughing at Diddy parties like, oh, you know, that's not cool. These people were raped, they were molested over and over, they were trafficked. What he did to them, you, you don't know what this is. There's nothing funny or cool about this. It is disgusting. And if you thought you're crazy, it's crazy like this, he was trying to make your friends from this. You've got Diddy, you've got Usher, you've got, a lot of people say that Aliyah was killed because of, of, of Diddy trying to get, I don't know who's that, Beyonce. Trying to get Beyonce for sure. I mean, listen to some of these people that have been coming out in Hollywood all of this time. You're about to see these people that you think are great people and have some amazing things. It's not, I mean, it's happening. You know, if you're in, I keep hearing, ah, ah, ah.
In the meeting on October 1st, the morning after Dr. Holman received the recording, Dr. Holman and Mr. Melton, you know, explained to Ms. Miller what they found objectionable, what they found unprofessional about the conversations that you just heard. You heard Ms. McCoy say that, argued that Ms. Miller was using this as a teachable moment for her students, that they were old enough, mature enough to handle such an explicit conversation. But from the district's point of view, what Mr. Melton and Dr. Holman told her in that meeting was that they expect a teacher to shut that type of conversation down. Sexual explicit conversation with students should not be engaged in, should be shut down. And what they also noted from Ms. Miller that what we heard on that recording was a teacher leading that discussion. That was an over three-minute excerpt from a conversation where Ms. Miller was clearly leading the discussion. There was not much back and forth. You could hear some students joking in the background, but this was not a question-and-answer session. And Dr. Holman told Ms. Miller in that meeting that there's no place in any Overton County school for such a sexually explicit conversation with students. And as the record shows, you know, Ms. Miller was suspended for four days. She served that suspension immediately. And we are here at the appeal because the hearing officer determined that the statements on that recording made to her classroom of students did constitute unprofessional conduct, and it did warrant a four-day suspension. Now, as Ms. McCoy has said, you know, teachers in Tennessee can only be dismissed or suspended for five reasons. Those are incompetence, inefficiency, neglect of duty, unprofessional conduct, or insubordination. I will focus on unprofessional conduct. That is the charge that the hearing officer found, that Ms. Miller's conduct qualified as. And the question before you today is whether to uphold or reverse the hearing officer's decision. You know, was the conversation you heard on the recording unprofessional conduct? Or was it acceptable, acceptable language for a classroom? Fortunately, you do not have to guess what qualifies as unprofessional conduct. The General Assembly and the State Board of Education have defined it for us in black and white. And the General Assembly, State Board of Education, they do not define unprofessional conduct based on what a room full of settings rules finds offensive or whether or not they are mature enough to hear it. That is defined, again, in regulation in state law. State law defines unprofessional conduct to include a teacher who disregards the code of ethics in such a manner as to make one obnoxious as a member of the teaching profession. That is further defined as, one example in the definition is that the teacher shall not engage in any sexually-related behavior with students, whether verbal or written. And the statute further defines sexually-related behavior to include sexual remarks. And I know Ms. McCoy read that statute to you. I won't go back through it for you. But importantly, the State Board of Education also has promulgated regulations on what constitutes unprofessional conduct for educators. And it includes what the State Board of Education has termed explicit inappropriate communications. The State Board defines that as, quote, "Any communication between an educator and a student that describes, represents, or alludes to sexual activity or any other illegal activity." I don't think there's any question that the explicit terms, the explicit communication you heard on the recording fits that definition under state law. And a four-day suspension is well within Dr. Holman's authority to impose as a discipline for unprofessional conduct. So I ask that you vote to uphold the hearing officer's decision. Thank you.
Is there any discussion concerning Ms. Miller's appeal of the decision? Board members are welcome to discuss the material before them and to ask Ms. Miller or Ms. Kimmel questions about those materials. Would any member like to make a motion that the board sustain Mr. Condor's decision? Send the record back for additional evidence? Decrease the penalty or reverse the decision?
Read those together, please.
Would any member like to make a motion that the board sustain Mr. Condor's decision? Send the record back for additional evidence? Decrease the penalty or reverse the decision?
I'd like that hold, make a motion to uphold the judge's decision.
Hey, should it make a motion to uphold the judge's decision? Do I have a second? Seconded by James Klaus. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? This board has voted to sustain the charges and Mr. Condor's decision in accordance with Tennessee co-manitated 49-5-512. If Ms. Miller is dissatisfied with the decision rendered today by the board, she shall have the right to appeal the decision to the Chansfield Court for Overton County within 20 days. We will move on to item number three. Consider approval of the following letters of retirement for Pat Oliver and Kim Huntley. Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by Ashley Carr. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Number four. Consider approval of the following letters of resignation for Suzanne Holtz, Macy Linder, Emily Slaton, Ryan Bowman, Carol Parr, and Jeff Fission-Hawke. Motion by Melissa Savage, seconded by James Klaus. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Consider approval of the Overton County Virtual Instruction and Educational Platform Contract for Pearson to Pearson Virtual Schools under Johnson City RFP number 6707. Motion by Sterling Myers, seconded by James Klaus. Any discussion?
On this virtual, like, would it be counted if those kids come back in the school on the virtuals? Would that be counted against the school on the store, or would that be counted as being applied? It didn't count for the student to join into the virtual program. Like, they could have all schools, they could be affiliated with. And not a school that they will take, contested with, that would be the school that they play ball with, for instance, or anything like that.
Why should it count against, I mean, why should they have tortured children's school? Or Kate Wilson, for example, is that not the smallest school? If you have a student that's underperforming through the virtual program, wouldn't that give an undue disadvantage to Wilson if I find those scores to that school?
I, I, I thought it was, they got to choose the best of where you were. You're assigned to that school.
That was the way they talked about it at the beginning of it.
I think we said pop most rap.
What, most rap, it's not worth it if you put on that crowd. That's where it should be.
We've looked into that a little further, though, and the students in the district have the opportunity to go to any school if they want to. So, we were going to look into it, even if they wanted to, but they have the option to go. Where would they want to go?
They may be playing sports at that school, but they're not actually getting the tools from that school. So that school is being assigned that score, and they have no influence over the kid themselves, right? And arrival.
It would hurt a school like Wilson, say that we had five virtual students and they, they did not perform properly or well. They didn't perform well. It would hurt a school like Wilson because the average would, people would bring them down. A school like Rickman probably wouldn't hurt them. But hopefully, our home school students would do well.
But could they be assigned to the district wide versus district? Could those schools not be applied district-wide as opposed to a specific school?
If I remember rightly, yes.
Do we have a choice in that, yes?
I think the answer is no, but I'll double check.
Okay.
Because at one time, we had the virtual, the homework, and we had to apply for a different school number because issues were sticking. So that's why we got away from that.
And would they be assigned to a certain teacher? Would that, would their score affect a certain teacher?
Pearson Virtual, we'll have to teach, we'll have to get a certain teacher to work there.
And then, if I'm not mistaken, they will handle, if that kid is not performing, they will get them out of the program, meaning they don't have to worry about technical issues and all of that if they aren't aligned.
And before they go into it, there's a criteria that determines before they get into the program. And then if they are in the program, they don't perform that hard enough, they're not a D in the class, they're not whatever it may be, but they're fairly different.
That was at Stillmore, and they were still going to have to do this and play sports. That's going to be on in class. It said if they had to do this, then they would all school. Well, that was more of a blessing.
That was a word session.
That was, that was her athletic director rules that she had. So, I mean, it's more or less up to her what she decides on that. The board's never voted on any kind of athletic rules. And we can't control TWS double A because everyone's on the, in high school level. But middle school level, it's more of kind of what she lays out the rules and, I guess, what we recommend on that. But... She said she wrote that in because the board passed this. That's why I voted against this, because she said she was changing it because the board voted this in. You know, at that meeting.
So, if I'm mistaken, I think that part was taken out.
Home school, home school students can still participate in, in middle school sports. Only if they take this program. That's what I'm saying, that's why I would have guessed.
That, that was there initially, but that's changed, that changed.
So now anybody can still apply.
Yes.
We don't have a, this virtual program.
Okay.
We need to make a policy on that.
So, if you're home school, now you can play ball wherever you want. Is that what we're saying?
If you're home school.
Correct.
You can play, play out for a team.
Try out for a team. And you can play ball, any school you choose.
And if you try to transfer from that school.
You cannot do.
No.
Okay, so.
But that's the way it already is. Now, I mean, that was my problem with this, where you had to play sports where you live at, and you only can do this. So, if you change that out of it, that's...
We changed over, kind of go with what you're saying.
Yeah. So, so what about the instance where, hypothetical, somebody rolls in this virtual program, they're tied to Richmond School. Again, I want to play ball at Allen's. So they're tied to Richmond, again, they're playing ball at Allen's.
The way we cut this, the way we're planning to do this, the way we cut this, the way we, the way we cut this is, when they sign up, they sign up for a certain, certain school that they're going to be affiliated with, a certain school. That would be the school that they play ball with and test with. That's what we want. And if they need anything, if they've got a special lead, need, an OT, a PT, or any type of a need like that, they would be, they would go to that school for that need.
So be clear, if a child is tied to Richmond, they can't say, oh, I want to play ball, but I want to play at Allen.
Now, it's true, she said, to begin with.
But yet, any school you're not in their program can pick anywhere they want to play. That's the issue right there.
They can pick at the beginning of the year and try out. And if they make the team, then they stay on that team. But if they transfer in the middle of the year, they can play at any other school.
I know, but I still got issues, like, if you're part of our program, you've got to play at a certain school. Or if you're not part of our program, you can play anywhere.
But it's the same way. If you go to school in Richmond, but you want to play ball for Allen's, you can't skip over.
I get, but it gives, it gives them no incentive to join.
Well, what I think is, is that student that you're saying in Richmond, when they go to play ball at Allen's, they'll be enrolled at Allen's. Their, they would, their school that they're affiliated with would no longer be Richmond, it would be Allen's.
So they would have to follow the same guidelines to request transfer by the director, just like any other student?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can, can you provide us with an updated version of the rules from the athletic director? Because when we left the last meeting, when we discussed this, it was my understanding that in order for a middle school child to play sports at a school, they had to participate in this virtual program to qualify.
You're right, that is the way, that's the way it ended up after that meeting.
It is, okay.
But, but since then, we've, we've looked into it, and we don't think that's a good fit.
Can we, can we get an updated template of the rules?
I just think we need to put in a policy, so we got it black and white. So we tell somebody, we can show them, whatever, and we don't misunderstand.
Of course, parents will call about it.
Yeah, if there's a policy, we can put on the next.
How you do.
Okay, I'll make sure to have a policy together with that, then we can review that and adjust the money.
Well, I mean, my whole point is we, if nobody brought up discussion, we voted on what was said the other night, not even the way the policy is set up, so.
Well, I believe in Overton County the way it had. We have never put in a policy because that makes it absolute on there. We have allowed it to be at the discretion of our athletic director. They were, they set the policy at the beginning of the year, and then they stuck to that policy for that entire year. And then toward the end of the year, if they needed to make any changes or anything to that, then they would bring it to the board and say, I'm recommending... I'm recommending they would make the changes to this, and then they would make it to that more of a procedure than a board policy. So, motion and a second on that.
I guess you won't do it, do we have a policy or some rules?
Well, the second and the motion lines will be rescinded, and then we can, so they make a motion to move that to the next meeting. Any second?
Can you tell us, uh, table?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, you're going to be guided by a series of laws of legislature passed regarding middle school athletic participation. The legislature weighed in that last session, last year, uh, and opened up that field for folks who are in home schools participating in middle school. And what you're talking about here is the difference basically between a home schooler and a virtual school. And now you've got a set of state board rules floating through the process and law as well, that determine where a person, where a child's eligibility is if they're enrolled in a virtual school. So, any policy that we write has to be in compliance with that, uh, where those laws are ruled. What we're going to do in this process is put it all together, so that whoever's in administration of the school can hand it to a parent, or you can add it to a parent if you need your point in the right direction. What that, uh, in real fashion, a policy that says that, you can, if, if it's, if it's, if it's the board's wish to move ahead, you can certainly do that, because everything you're doing tonight is going to be governed by law and by state board rule anyway. Uh, it just, this will give us an opportunity to go ahead and enroll some students in the virtual program, but also give you the opportunity, and also give them the opportunity to participate or try out if they can, uh, you know, see if they can make the team. While we're putting together instructions, you don't have a support.
Thank you, Mr. Page. So, you want to go ahead and proceed with that, and then they'll get the policy together, and we'll vote on it at the next meeting, and then the next one. Yeah?
Yes.
All right, so all in favor, uh, we're spending money on this, so we have a roll call vote.
Mitch Stunt Tucker?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Aston?
Yes.
Ten four zero, opposed, motion passes.
Number six, consider approval of the Oakton County Schools' partnership with Rich University and no cost to the school district. I want to let you go.
Rich University is a, a program that we have come and, uh, get up, come and wire up, and it has nothing to do with Rich County. This is something totally different, and we thought this would be something that would be good for our educational assistance in our school system. Uh, it's, uh, like I said, this is only for, uh, an Overton County, uh, educational assistance, so that they have to be an employee. And this is a, through this university, where they can earn a BS degree, liberal status, so they would earn a bachelor's degree. And, but now they would not have a teaching license, they'd have a bachelor's degree, and then after that, after they get their bachelor's degree, then they would be, uh, then they could, uh, go back and add on an endorsement after that. Now, the expense to them is very, very minimal, it seems like such a, a good deal, and some other districts around are doing this. It, it costs the employees sixty-five dollars a month, so they can get a, they can get a, uh, a BS degree. I think someone figured it does like around three thousand dollars or so, you know, but, and then they will do it. Uh, and when they get their BS degree, then they would be eligible to, uh, like, apply with ITECH or some other corporation to get a, a teacher's certificate.
Just, you just don't face that or something?
Um, at a college? Well, or they could, if they could get a job working with some, working with the school system, you know, but yes, yes, they do.
They could go back and hang it on, or they might accept the work experience, is that what you're saying?
The work experience, the work experience.
Well, the license.
Sounds like a lot of the classes.
So, this, is it just for E A Z M or any support?
E A Z M is what I'm thinking, E A Z M.
Does someone else handle this completely? I mean, when they sign up, someone's in charge of them from this?
Yeah, we wouldn't.
We have no input, no responsibilities?
We wouldn't have to disagree up to that, up to those individuals if they wanted to do this, just like if one of our individuals wanted to go to some tech.
Right, if they're just going off to.
It's just, uh.
Rich University.
Yeah, we just thought this would be something that would be good to, uh, to benefit some of our employees and help us. I'm going to go to a bar before, and approve it if you all are into it.
Seconded by Ben Danner, seconded by Alice Reed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven, consider approval of the cer- certification of adoption by local Board of Education.
That's a chance.
That's a chance.
That's a chance. That makes sense to me.
Motion by Shirley Myers, seconded by Mitch Stunt Tucker. All in favor, please say aye.
You have to. You have to adopt, you don't have to buy it, but you must adopt it. There's a motion to adopt it. You don't have to buy it, but you have to adopt.
Second.
Is that roll call? We, we, anybody?
Well, we'll do the roll call.
Uh, William Aston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Mitch Stunt Tucker?
Yes.
Ten four zero, opposed, motion passes.
Consider approval of Autism, Autism and Behavior Services LLC agreement to provide functional ba- behavior assessments.
I'll make a question.
Motion by Ashley Carr, seconded by Ben Danner. All?
Yes.
Yep, so we'll have to have a roll call vote.
Mitch Stunt Tucker?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Aston?
Yes.
Ten four zero, opposed, motion passes.
Number nine, consider first reading of approval of the following board policies, five point four zero three drug and alcohol testing for employees, and five point five zero one complaints and grievances. Motion by Ashley Carr, seconded by James Klaus. All in favor, please say aye. Discussion.
I have a question. On this policy, uh, I thought the problem was that once the principal or whoever identified there was a problem and had recommended drug testing, that the problem was, did the teacher stay in the classroom within the school while this drug testing was going on? Or did they go home and stay until they, you got a yes or no, positive or not? That's, that's what we kept discussing. Once we say we need to drug test you, does your teacher just stay in the classroom until it comes back? And sometimes it's, it's been several days or so since we got it back, and sometimes it's positive. So, is the new policy cover that?
Yes, yes, that's just, that's the only thing that changes.
That's the only thing that covers all the whole.
The first page, there, it's line twenty-two through twenty-four, those three lines, they were added in there, that's where it.
Okay, that was, I had the old one, sorry.
That's all right.
But, they'd go home as soon as you recommend testing, and then come back when they're notified. Correct?
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number ten, consider approval of the fiscal year twenty-six, one forty-one general purpose school original budget.
Um, our, our budget is, is, it's shaken out with the torrid position that, uh, we, uh, decreased our technology, uh, the amount that we spend every, uh, that we have allotted every year, about fifty thousand, and we set, um, individual budgets quite a bit. Uh, like, for instance, I'll say, if we can, we did boost that down just as much as we can, and that got us, that got us into a bit. And the, the budgets that we've been talking about before were preliminary budgets, and that's why I tried to give you all information about our budget before, so that you all have input on how many budgets you want to, uh, make decisions, you know. That was why I was giving you information. Perfect. Have any, any decisions we can go with?
It was so chicken, you know, it kept running.
So, does this one have the two thousand across the board, and we kept the dollar supporting?
It's twenty-five hundred across the board, and a dollar for preparation.
So, we kept it all, we kept the twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, I'll have it, sure, sure.
He's in there, and of course, that would be involved with the high scales.
Do you have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by Rick Dodson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approval of the fiscal year twenty-six, one forty-two federal projects original budget. Do you have a motion? Motion by James Klaus, seconded by Ben Danner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approval of the fiscal year twenty-six, one forty, one forty-three caf- central cafeteria original budget. Do you have a motion? Motion by James Klaus, seconded by Ben Danner. All, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approval of fiscal year twenty-six, one fifty-six debt services original budget. Have a motion? Motion by Shirley Myers, seconded by Ben Danner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approval of fiscal year twenty-six, one seventy-seven capital projects original budget. Do you have a motion? Motion by James Klaus, seconded by Rick Dodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive action items, number one, approve the following low bids for twenty-twenty-five lawn care services. A H Roberts Elementary, Jimmy White, four hundred dollars a mowing. Allen's Elementary, Jimmy White, four hundred dollars a mowing. Hillham Elementary, J V Lawn Care, two hundred and fifty dollars a mowing. Livingston Middle School, Jimmy White, four hundred and fifty dollars a mowing. Livingston Academy, Jimmy White, one thousand one hundred dollars a mowing. Richmond Elementary, Jimmy White, eight hundred and fifty dollars a mowing. Wilson Elementary, Jimmy White, four hundred dollars a mowing. Reach Academy, J V Lawn Care, fifty dollars a mowing. Overton County Board of Education Bus Garage, J V Lawn Care, seventy dollars a mowing. Soccer Field, J V Lawn Care, one hundred and forty dollars a mowing. Do you have a motion? Motion by James Klaus, seconded, seconded by Shirley Myers. Any discussion?
Yeah, what about, uh, I brought up something with the soccer, about them already paying for the field they're mowing, so, here's.
So, since I took over as president of the soccer program, just right behind us, um, for the first three years that I was part of, I've been part of it for, I guess, nine years now, um, the Board of Education, we had an agreement, it's all paid for from June, July, and August, and we paid for it for the other eight months. About three years ago, I came in and I talked to Crystal.
Crystal.
Crystal, I'm sorry, I'm horrible.
No, you're fine.
Um, and we had a discussion about how, I didn't really like how the mowers mowed it, because they would wait till it got super high, and then they would cut it off and they'd kill my grass, and it's kind of hard for it to make a recovery. So, I offered to pay for the full twelve months of mowing and let you all take that out of your budget. I'm still okay with that. I signed off to be the president of the soccer association till June of twenty eighteen. So, as long as Crystal, you can check in with me one day for a year to make sure that I'm still the deciding factor on that. I would love to take that out of your all's budget if we can, that way you all don't have to pay for that anymore, and I will take care of paying for that, if that's okay with you.
So, what do you have with that?
So, in the bid, the way it was bid out, they have always done the, um, Board of Education has paid kind of half of that, maybe three months. Did you all have to pay possibly four months, I think, while the sport was in season? So, she did tell me, which I wasn't clear on that, I didn't understand, that she said that we pay it the whole time, and I did speak with their mower at the time, uh, and make sure that he was only mowing during his season. So, anyway, that was very gracious of her, and you all have to.
Young guys from our school?
The lady that we have that mows our fields, if you haven't seen it very, if you haven't seen it, it looks amazing. And I hate to put that on somebody else's hands, and then it gets scuffed, and then we're playing on brown grass. So, I don't, I don't know if everybody knows how important soccer is, but it's kind of important to me. So, uh, I would like to take that off your all's hands and save you some money. It costs us a lot more money, but I'm kind of passionate about how it looks out there, and I'd like for it to look really, really good. Not that they wouldn't do a good job, but I just really.
We want it here, we.
Yeah, I do.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, and too, I thought, I looked at this and I was like, where can we cut some money to give back to the school? And I'm like, if we're already paying for this, and we've been paying for it over the summer for the last two years, there's no point in you all continuing to pay for that, and we're paying double, and you're paying somebody to do absolutely nothing. Uh, the soccer field, this is the last one.
I think.
Well, you, you.
I do need a mower.
Okay. Let them.
So, uh, this is per mowing. Who decides how often the, the mowing occurs? And who decides how many times each year the mowing occurred, uh, or was that?
At one time.
What, what impact, obviously?
The principal would call, I mean, the, the school itself knew when it needed mowing, and then.
So, so the principal, each school decided to.
I must say, can't schedule, Mitch, that's Susan.
Essentially, it was noted, uh, it was voted a long time ago that we did fourteen mowings, uh, per year, but then we did, I think, uh, Mr. Dodson made the motion last year, I think, that we took that out, because sometimes we would have to go back and, uh, add a mowing, and we would just approve it, but that was time to take that out. So, that way we don't have to just stand by the fourteen, it could be fifteen or sixteen mowings, but it's the same for each school.
Yeah, like I said, sometimes, sometimes, when they're dealing, it's like, hey, and it's all everywhere, one out, I mean, it looks bad, and they let it go, but.
It's easier to let them stay on top of it.
Oh, yeah, versus.
They usually run with the principal real well to try to keep it.
Okay, so we'll need to rescind the second. Do you have a second?
Uh, Shirley Myers?
Shirley, you can rescind.
Not at this court, no, I, I would have said.
And they made the motion?
I made a motion, I was, and I didn't make a motion, but.
If James were to send us.
So, will the office, I feel?
All right. Shirley, you're okay with going to say it on this?
Yes, sir.
And we'll need a roll call vote now, because we're standing on the correct.
Uh, William Aston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Mitch Stunt Tucker?
Yes.
Ten four zero, opposed, motion passes.
Okay, we'll move to the contend agenda item, and if everybody's okay with that, I'll read those all off, and we'll approve them in one motion, if everybody's all right with that. Number one is one forty-two fiscal year twenty-five HQIM Literacy Implementation Networks Revision Number Two. One forty-two fiscal year twenty-five CTE Perkins Basic Revision Number Five. One forty-two fiscal year twenty-five CTE Perkins Revision Reserve Revision Number Five. One forty-two fiscal year twenty-five I D E A Partnership for Systematic Change K through twelve Revision Number Two. One forty-three fiscal year twenty-five Central Cafeteria Revision Number Two. Fund one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one fifty-six, and one seventy-seven quarterly reports. One forty-one fiscal year twenty-five General Purpose School Revisions Number Eight. Livingston Academy Dance Team Overnight Summer Camp at Lilydale Campground, six fifteen twenty-five to six eighteen twenty-five. Livingston Academy J R O T C Trip to Bluegrass Army Depot, B G A D in Richmond. Livingston Academy J R O T C trip to Bluegrass Army Depot, B G A D in Richmond, Kentucky, five twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, five twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Livingston Academy volleyball team overnight tournament to Aloha, Hawaii. Uh, eight twenty-five, twenty twenty-five to eight thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Livingston Academy basketball team overnight trip to Golf Breeze High School in Pensacola, Florida, twelve twenty-six, twenty twenty-five through twelve thirty, twenty twenty-five. Overton County four H overnight junior four H camp at Clyde York four H center in Crossville, six sixteen, twenty twenty-five to six twenty, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve those? Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by Melissa Savage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special recommendation, O E C, O C E A Jennifer Island?
Do you think? We're almost done with this whole year, just a few days left, because we have to really pay attention to the summer because we'll be on before we know it. Uh, I like to bring to y'all things that are concerning to the teachers in the county. And what I'm hearing right now is the biggest amount of concern is the people that have been notified that they won't be renewed next year. And there's several aides in the county, there's some teachers, non-tenure teachers. But, uh, that's very concerning. We have a lot of empathy and concern for our fellow employees. We know that there's negative issues. Um, we just wish there was ways that we could work around sending people home. Especially aides that are so close to retirement. It's kind of heartbreaking, so, thank you.
Do we have anybody else to comment?
Yeah.
All right, I'll take a motion to, uh, motion by Rick Dodson, seconded by James Klaus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, if it's all right with everybody, we'll go right into the work session. I don't believe we have anything on the work session other than a reminder to. Please be sure to bring your hundred and fifty dollars sponsorship check for the May twenty twenty-five graduates. Anybody have anything else?
Uh, Crystal handed out these, uh, electricity and water expenses for fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, significant jump in water. Do we know why? I mean, was it, was water rates go up or was the utilization of water go up?
They were high, Jane.
I'm concerned with the water. The water rate was also.
I don't know.
Maybe the water rate went up, maybe.
Doctor Hummer?
I, I do think, I do have someone, someone from Johnson, we told, we wanted to talk about these, uh, talk about these savings that we, you all mentioned last time. There's one here that is, uh.
And any questions? That's a big saver, like from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we spent six hundred seventy-one thousand on electric. And last year we spent five hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. That's huge.
Yeah, and then the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, that was when we done Johnson.
Yeah, and in those, in those packets, it'll, it breaks it down what the, uh, estimated savings were versus the actual.
Yes. Anything else? All right, we're bringing the work session to an end. I'm gonna read all these papers.